I'd like to call the October Board meeting to order and remind everyone to please silence your cellphones, and if you would, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Throw up any comments? Okay. Anyone have any modifications to the agenda? I do have one. We do need to add an executive session to the end of the meeting to discuss legal and real estate matters, so we need to add that to -- I was fine with that. Okay. President's report. We have a couple of things. As always, we like to recognize some of our partners in education, and I'm going to read off a list of those. Some partners have been very instrumental in what we've been doing, and then we got the pleasure of hearing about another partnership that we have that's been really, really successful. So I'll do this one first and read off some of the names of partners in education that have done great things. Airtime Bounce Centers, Bancorp South, Discovery Center Springfield, Evangel University, Farmers Insurance, Amber Bruton Agency, Jump Mania, McDonald's at South Campbell, Ozark Regional YMCA, Pro Wash of the Ozarks, Rapid Refill Inc., Springfield News Leader, The Skinny Improv, Uncle Lloyd's Cookie Company. They need to be a partner with the board. Verizon Wireless. I'll certainly thank you to all those businesses for their effort to do that. At this time, I would like to introduce Josie McPhail to introduce our -- the partnership for tonight. Josie?
Good evening, everyone. As you all know, the Partners in Education program plays an instrumental role in the academic success of our buildings, and each year we have about 150 businesses and organizations that contribute resources, time, and energy to help our students and our teachers. Per your request, each month we will be having a spotlight from a partner in education, and this evening we're going to kick things off with Big Brothers Big Sisters. The partnership started with them back in 1994, and since then, they have grown to serving almost 650 students here in Springfield Public Schools at 14 district school sites just last year. So I'd like to introduce to you the Board President, Eddie Lawrence, to tell us just a quick snippet about the partnership.
Thanks.
Good evening. As Josie said, we started the program 16 years ago. Since 2004, we've served 3,742 students in the program. That's pre-K through 5th grade, and based on teacher evaluations, just some of the positive feedback we've seen so far, 68% of the kids in the program have shown improvement in academic performance, 69% have shown improvement in their attitude towards school, 66% have shown improvement in preparedness for school, and 63% have had better relationship with their peers. And we actually have the ability to measure our results at every program we do, so these are definitive results that we're seeing with the school program with you guys. Can't thank you enough for the 16 years of partnership. It's been a great opportunity, and we look forward to continued endeavors in the future with you guys, and I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have them, or questions?
Is there anybody else back there that was with you you want to introduce? Is there anybody else back there that you'd like to introduce?
Yeah, actually, I guess I should. Thank you. On the end here, we have Judy Jawett. She's our site-based director that handles all the after-school programs. Katie Davis, actually, has just gotten promoted. She's going to be our new executive director effective October 30th. Lisa is retiring as our executive director. So Katie's been -- she was with us as an intern in college, graduated from the University of Missouri with a master's in nonprofit management. Actually, we were very lucky for her to fall back into our lap when she did, and she's done several things for us over the last three years. And then next is Gretchen Gambon. She came to us from Isabel's House, I guess, in March, so. Been a great asset to the board for -- and the agency are with us as well, so. Thank you.
Thank you. That's really all I got to report at this time. Dr. Ritter, superintendent's report?
This time, I'd like to introduce Nancy Frazino, who is the executive director of Springfield Public Schools Foundation, and also the president of her board, and that's Joseph Reed, who works for Letharg Engage, and they'd like to share with you a project that they're doing, and really hope that you're fully aware of what it is. It's a very exciting project as far as working with our alumni, so if you'd come forward, please.
Foundations, this is our 20th year, Foundation for Springfield Public Schools, and we've been told for years dating back prior to Nancy and me that alumni have constantly asked the foundation, "Is there a database that we have? I'm trying to locate a fellow alumni," or "We're trying to have a class reunion, and we would love to be able to have a list." And to this date, we haven't. But we're excited to be able to say that we're partnering with Harris Connect, which is a company that does this quite often, not only in high schools but colleges and post-graduate work, and we will be going through with all five high schools in Springfield, going back as far as they can, up to 60 years for Central, and Kickapoo and Glendale, and the rest less, but going back as far as they can and trying to locate all of our alumni. They will contact the alumni, ask for their current information. They'll give those alumni the chance, if they wanted to buy the bound volume that has the alumni directory in it. But the exciting thing from the foundation's standpoint is we'll have that database, and we'll be able to then contact all these alumni that are spread across the globe. Of course, one thing that Harris Connect tells us is the best thing that all alumni love is the database for the high school directory. They love that. This will also be able to give us where we can make them aware of what's going on with the school district, make them aware of how every year the district has less and less money to work with, and the foundation, that's one, our main goal is to raise, manage, and distribute funds. We did it earlier this year with over 140-something thousand with our Back to School, and we feel like this will open up an even bigger avenue for us. Also, we'll let the high schools, for example, the chief fund, I'll give an example, if they wanted to raise money and they could end up having access to even more Kickapoo alumni to help with that project. And what it'll do, Harris Connect will basically go do that all for us, manage it, get it together, and then the database will be owned solely by the foundation and will not be distributed to any third parties or anything like that, so it will be totally secure, and we have checked with all that and are fully confident with that. And Nancy and I are here to answer any questions you guys might have of us.
Ms. Callen?
Will there be any cost to the district for this project?
None.
It's a -- and I guess the other thing that just needs to be clarified, it's all voluntary involvement.
Yes, ma'am. If -- and I've asked for the type of questions that they ask, and I've read it, and it is fine. I mean, they will ask for your information if you want to share it. If you don't want to share it, they say that's fine. Then they will ask if you would like to buy the book or the electronic version. If you say no, I think they give you one more chance. We've all probably been -- had these questions, but no means no. And so it is, we didn't want to do this if we thought it was going to be any kind of infringement on anyone, and we didn't want it to look like that anyone was being pushed, and we're assured from the foundation's standpoint that that won't be the case.
So this really provides a service to our alumna -- our alumni and our citizens at our alumni of our schools when they're trying to organize events and things.
Yes, ma'am. Like, for the reunion CD, we're told that, for example, they will give you for your class, and I think the class before and the class above you, so you'll have a three-year. And what we're going to do, if anyone comes to us for the reunion CD, one of the, what we would like to do is go to that reunion, tell them about what's going on with the district, and then ask them how we can help, and then also see if they're willing to donate, because if they're -- we find, and all the studies show, that if more high school graduates would like to give their particular high school, then just go to a quote "fund." So this will open up doors where we might have funds that are directed for avenues that we've never even dreamed about.
Are there any neighboring -- I know there are. Are there any neighboring districts that are currently doing this?
Yes, there's a few, but there's some of the bigger ones. I know Joplin has done it before, and there's a few around St. Louis, so it's becoming more popular, but it's a new thing for the -- for high school. It's not for college. This has been done for years. So I think this is very exciting and a perfect time for this.
Upgraded every year?
Yes, we can get it upgraded every year.
A couple of questions. And I think you may have already answered this, but the company, what they get out of it is hoping that alumni are going to buy the bound book.
Yes, sir.
Correct. But once they create the database, then the database goes into your hands, and you can provide that to reunion committees, however you see fit. Is that correct?
That's exactly correct. They do not own the database whatsoever. The thing that gets -- it's their expense, it's their time, but they're trying to sell the product, which is either the electronic version, the hardbound version, or the reunion CD.
Okay. But we can also provide that reunion or reunion information, however we see fit, or the foundation anyway?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. And in terms of other districts, I went to a presentation last year, I think, at MSBA, a school outside of St. Louis that did this with, I think, this company, and really had some good things to say about the process and the fact that their school, like our school, has lots of graduates that don't stay in Springfield, and they told the story of a professor, I think I've told you this, Professor at MIT, that reconnected to his high school because he was contacted through this, and now has, you know, has really become a partner in their high school. And you see all these graduates across the country connecting with those people, bringing them back in some way, either physically or financially. You know, I can see great potential for expanding your fundraising base, and again, I think you're right. I think people want to give to their particular high school more so than Springfield Public Schools, because if they're Kickapoo, they're not Glendale, and if they're Glendale, they're not Hillcrest. We all know that, and that's fine. That's good. But, you know, being able to tie into reunion committees and tracking these people, I think is a wonderful idea, so. Ms. Twitty?
Well, just one other thing, and I know this came out of some discussion we had, that it's, maybe you've already stated this, but just so that it's understood, we will not hold this information. The foundation will hold it, so we won't be subject to any public requests for information regarding that data. If they want it, they come to you.
Correct, and it is held secure by us.
Okay. Thank you.
No questions?
Dr. Ritter, if I may, introduce two other individuals that are here with us.
I was just going to suggest that.
Beau Barrett, who is our treasurer, and Tracy Barnes, who is our president-elect. And so while Beau is here, if anyone had any questions with an update, as I'm putting him on the spot, but with me and Nancy about the foundation's finances or how things are going or anything like that, now's a great time, if it can be answered.
We're very excited about this project. I mean, one that's really driving me crazy on wanting this kind of information is Dan Childs, so make sure you give him a call.
I will.
And let him know you're doing this.
I will.
Okay, I really appreciate that. Okay. Anyway, thank you a lot.
Thank you.
Our alumni are going to really look forward to it.
Thank you.
I think Dan is doing their reunion, Glendale's reunion.
Yeah, that's exactly right. Interested in this.
But really, on that note, the Springfield Public School Foundation's been with us for 20 years, and wow, what a foundation. I really think, I don't think I've ever experienced a better foundation as far as a public school foundation, so hats off to you guys, and we're looking forward to a strong future. Appreciate it. Another thing I want to mention is that a few months ago, I mentioned that we might be able to start our school year earlier while, after reconsidering and looking at the possibilities of getting our air conditioning into all of our schools at a timely matter, we think we're going to really be pushing it, so we're going to suggest that we stay with the starting time as we have now, so we can get our air conditioning in, and then we'll start the following year with a much earlier calendar. So right now, I want to announce that really, as we look at it, to have the assurance that it's done, we don't have people working weekends or nights to get it in, it's best that we wait. So I just want to let the board know that. One other thing I want to mention, I've visited three middle schools and about seven to eight elementaries and a high school, and what I'm finding in the middle schools is that they're very, very excited about the 6th grade. They're finding that the kids are ready to go. There's a good work ethic, the reading level is much higher, their understanding of math concepts is very, very strong, and I'm talking about some tough middle schools, and also I'm talking about Pershing, very excited about the 6th grade. Also Pleasant View and Jarrett, and all of them are really very, very pleased with the 6th grade. On the high school level, I just had an opportunity to meet with Jay Rush at Hillcrest, and they're very pleased with their 9th grade. They said over the last two years, they're seeing good discipline, good, as far as good behavior, good work ethic, good study skills, and so I think there's some things that are happening throughout our system that we're starting to see, some consistency, good alignment, it's starting to resonate, so I'm excited about that, and I think that explains some of our performance as well. So I wanted to highlight that. I did find a match to Dr. Goodman. Her name is Roxy at Harrison, and she's the woman's side of what I would call, I don't want to say nerd, but pretty close, to where she is really into data, wants to get into cognos, and wow, what a classroom. You need to walk into that classroom. She's got kids using not the phone but calculators and basically able to connect, they use the smartboard, and they get immediate response, and then she can find out how the whole class does as far as responding to problems, word problems and things like that. So Roxy is a 4th grade teacher at Harrison.
Oh, Harrison, okay.
At Harrison, David Harrison, I'm sorry, David Harrison. But anyway, so there's some exciting things going on, and if any of you ever want to, we can sit down and share that. I know Mr. Hosmer was with me at Boyd, and also saw a teacher that was really pretty much into looking at data and driving the data, letting the data drive her decisions as well. So another thing I want to mention is that today, this week is National School Bus Safety Week, and so far, we haven't had anybody look at their finger to get, you know, the blood and a few other things, so safety has been good as far as the school bus safety week, so we're highlighting and recognizing that this week. So that's all I have at this time. Any questions, anybody?
Moving on to informational items, item 5101, the October Quarterly Report, and Dr. Goodman and Ms. Gessner?
We'll have Dr. Goodman come up and give the presentation, and I want to highlight that, remember, Board, you're, we're really focusing in on what you are targeting as requirements and what you're really wanting to look at. So we may not visit that much about AYP map testing. We're going to be looking at a lot of other things as well, so just so that you know that. Dr. Goodman, please.
Thank you and good evening. It's my pleasure to present to you this evening the first quarterly report for the 2010-2011 school year, and in tonight's report, we will follow the process that has previously been established for presenting of the findings, where we do not bring all possible measures in the report, but pull out those specifically identified through certain criteria. And in tonight's presentation, we will share updates, opportunities for improvement, and identified strengths. Within the updates realm, we want to share performance related to communication arts, percent of students scoring proficient and advanced, as well as the math, Algebra I End of Course Assessment. On the opportunities for improvement side, we will look at communication arts, English II End of Course Assessment, and then on the science side, the percent of students scoring proficient and advanced. Finally, to close with strengths, we will look at math, percent of students proficient and advanced. On the update side, and have provided for you the page number on the charts as well, if you have the report up, and I think we should have the presentation there as well. To begin with, on the communication arts side as an update, we did see an increase in the overall measure, and this measure is rolling together all grade levels and the End of Course Assessment indicated by the high school there into one measure, looking at percent of students proficient and advanced. We did see an increase of 1.3% from 54.28 to 55.59 from the '09 to '10 assessment on MAP. Then going into the grade levels, you see specifically a grade level trend for 3rd grade, 4th grade, and 5th grade, and all three grade levels are up from '09 to '10 in terms, again, of percent scoring proficient and advanced. And we are disaggregating these here by the different comparable districts, and what's interesting is we move from the elementary side of communication arts over to the middle school here on the next one, is that our general percentages essentially increase as we go across the grade levels in reference to the comparables. So to point that out, and I don't have a pointer up here, but I think I can do it with the arrow. So we can see that 3rd grade communication arts is here with Columbia and North Kansas City, literally kind of laying on top of each other. Similar for 4th, 5th grade starts to separate itself a little bit, then up to 6th grade, we can see kind of pulling a little bit higher. Similarly, then at 7 and 8, and so kind of across that span, we're seeing those percentages increase. Also, previously, the Board has identified an interest in seeing the data presented from a cohort perspective, and so we have it for both the elementary side and the middle school side. We'll start with the elementary. First piece to note here, 3rd grade is just represented by the dot, that's their baseline year on the MAP, and so of interest to see here is 3rd grade performance is up from a cohort perspective versus the two previous cohorts, so those that were 4th graders last year and 5th graders, and we see that by indication at 45% for the blue diamond. Another point here.
I'm sorry, let me make sure. The 45 is the 3rd graders this year?
3rd grader, they'd be 4th graders now. They were 3rd graders when they took the assessment.
Green is?
They were 4th graders in the testing year, yes.
Okay, so when they were 3rd graders, they scored?
Exactly, yeah. And so the piece, kind of to point out here, is kind of that upward increase in the percent scoring proficient and advanced. Then when we go to the middle school side, we see it's that same idea, whereas as the assessment has been going since 2006, we can begin to see kind of more trend piece and what that looks like over the span. The next update comes on the mathematics, Algebra I End of Course Assessment, and the update here brings in the perspective of the percent scoring in top two levels again, and it's important to note, the End of Course Assessment was a, basically a shift or a new assessment for high school assessment, beginning in the 2008-2009 year. Previously, they had done grade level MAP, and the state transitioned to giving assessments at the end of specific courses, and so we only have the two years of data on this measure at this time, and we bring this forward as an update because we had previously identified it and presented it last year as a baseline coming in because it was our first time out, and at that time, you can see our performance was up with the regional cohort, up above 70% of students taking the assessment up. We can see that that percentage is down in the 2010 administration, and I would reference you to a table that we noted in there that gives the number of reportable students, which is essentially how many students took the assessment, and so you can see that essentially for those locations, and it wasn't just Springfield, but you see other districts up there that went down, essentially there was a pretty markedly noticeable increase in the number of students taking it, so it brings in really more the full group. On the opportunity for improvement side, present to you the English II High School Communication Arts End of Course Assessment, and the criteria for this being identified as an opportunity for improvement is the performance relative to the comparable districts, and we do not meet or exceed the majority of comparable districts. Now granted, we're right there with North Kansas City, but from a decimal point perspective, we're actually below North Kansas City, so we're not meeting or exceeding the majority, so thus the criteria for an opportunity for improvement. And then similarly, moving to the science side, just like the comm arts shown a minute ago, this first measure aggregates in all grade levels, so the science is not given at every grade, it's just at 5th, 8th, and then the high school Biology I End of Course Assessment. And so this measure then is rolling in all students into one, and again, if we use the criteria of meeting or exceeding the majority of comparable districts, we can see that we do not, and thus the identification for the opportunity for improvement. Providing that data to you disaggregated out by grade level for 5th and 8th, we can see that it's really, it's not one 5th grade or 8th grade relative, you know, up or down in terms of one is exceeding a bunch and the other isn't. They're both pretty comparable in terms of where that performance is falling. And then similarly, on the high school side, this brings in the End of Course Assessment for Biology I. We can see that the performance is flattened kind of in the middle of the districts. And so the opportunity for improvement then comes in rolling all those together and looking at that comparable performance. Finally, to share with you on the strength end is math performance, and again, with our criteria being exceeding, meeting or exceeding the majority of comparable districts, we can see we're in the top end of this grouping, basically right in line with the regional cohort, who's kind of the plum maroonish color there. That's the reason we can't see very well, because we're laying on top of each other. And this one is also aggregating all grade levels together. In going into the grade levels, we can then see what our performance looks like across that span from '06 through '10. We see we're at the top end of the group, really with performance generally just behind Rockwood at elementary, and then here's middle, and in fact, it's kind of probably the closest we came to Rockwood, which being the benchmark district noted for high performance, was at 6th grade. We can see we were within a couple of percent of Rockwood's percentage there at 6th grade percent, top two. Just like with the communication arts, we do have the cohort perspective as well, so here we see the, that same data except laid out from the idea of the grade levels that the students were in and tracking it back across those time points. And so here's the math version of that, laid out like the communication arts, and we can see 3rd, 4th, and 5th, and so essentially, from the cohort perspective, we see it's essentially flat from 3rd to 4th and then up at 5th, and when we expand that to the middle school, we see that somewhat similar to, as previously happened with other cohorts as well. The, kind of the real celebration on this one of interest to point out is that if we look at the blue line, which would be this year's 7th graders, they would have been 6th graders at the time, we can see that as 5th graders, comparing them with the red group, they were essentially at the same spot, but a noticeable increase in a much higher amount of growth to the end of their 6th grade assessment versus the previous group. And so in summation, we have shared updates, opportunities for improvement, and strengths as identified in the quarterly report, and I'd be happy to take any questions at this time.
Questions for Dr. Goodman? Ms. Callen?
It's puzzling to me that the scores of the same students on their math assessments seem to compare favorably with all of our benchmark districts, whereas the communication arts seems to start low. There are larger deficiencies of our children in elementary, and then that gap seems to narrow as they get into middle school. Has there ever been any discussion or why we think that's the case? I mean, are we dealing with, I mean, I would imagine at some level, depending on what children's backgrounds are coming into school and their school readiness, we're having to make up for some gaps early on in their career, and then the longer they're with us, the better they're doing. But I guess I would be interested in if we can find some, if we have some idea why that is, because it doesn't, it doesn't seem consistent, because then math is higher than most of those comparable districts.
Right, understand. Dr. Ritter?
If I may, the, what they find in math is that really all kids start pretty much at the same level of math with the language and also the understanding of problem solving, and then the concepts. What's interesting is, is the poorer the child is, the less vocabulary that's going on in the home, and so therefore, the child is not exposed to the vocabulary. So they're finding in very, in typical poverty type of environments, that the communication arts starts very low, and then eventually, when you really do a very intense instruction around that child, the math tends to stay about, you know, it progresses slowly, but then the communication arts starts taking off because the vocabulary has expanded, but also the reading comprehension and the reading is much more expanded. And it all comes down to the vocabulary around the child from early on. And it all comes down to the vocabulary around the child from early on.
So the, the culture or, or, you know, the environment from which the child comes has a greater impact on their language skills than their math skills. Yeah, well, that's kind of what I thought, but I mean, certainly, we wouldn't want to see kids start to do worse if they were in our district. So the fact that they're doing better and that gap is closing. The other thing, there was, you didn't touch on it-
Ms. Callen, if I may add one more, kind of as an extension on that as well. That was kind of the nice piece about looking at it from the cohort perspective of seeing, you know, from a one to a four, one to a, I'm sorry, a four to a five percent increase at that starting point, is also knowing that we've been very intentional on the K2 side in the, in recent years of kind of getting it, really some of these same aspects and elements of, of bringing kids up quicker.
The other thing I noticed that you didn't mention is the African-American group, subgroup, and the achievement there. And if I read the charts right, it shows that our African-American students are actually performing better than state average and actually better than most of our, if not all of our-
Subgroups?
Our comparable groups, yeah. Is that right? Okay.
And the reason that I didn't bring it out specifically was it was on the AYP side. And so we just didn't-
Yeah, but I think that's an important thing to bring out because I think that's something we've been talking about both as a board and as a community. And I think to, to actually have numbers there and, and see where we do compare, certainly there is probably still a gap between that achievement of that subgroup and, and our students at large, but I was pleased to see that.
So this is the Communication Arts side. And one piece that we had identified on this as a kind of a next step was, we noted North Kansas City's performance. They're gold in this case. And so we have identified as a next step to make a contact on the North Kansas City side to visit about this, this subgroup performance as it relates to Communication Arts. So I'm thinking the math is maybe the one you had identified for African-American.
Yeah, I think it was. I don't have the actual chart written down. I just remember when I was reading the report. Yeah, that's it. What page is that, thirty-three?
Thirty-three. Yeah, and so if we note comparable performance here, you're right, we are exceeding all comparable groups. We don't compute a regional cohort on this one because it's dependent on the other districts making a subgroup in terms of the number of reportable students. And many of our, our members of the regional cohort don't make in many of the subgroup areas.
I mean, they, they just don't have enough African-American students enrolled in their schools to measure that.
Correct.
Okay. And I guess the, the only other thing I'm interested in, and I've asked this before because I think it's important as we, because I still would like a clarification. I know that at the state level, there are grade level expectations that we, you know, focus our curriculum around and, and measure progress. And then there's also a different measure, which is the MAP measure of proficient or advanced. How do those two compare?
Sure. And we do have this, we provided this as a link. It was, it was kind of buried in many pages. This is one of the longer reports of the year. We did provide some documentation from the state's materials that gives a description by grade level, by content area, for what these achievement levels mean. So from Mrs. Callen's comment, that we have grade level expectations that guide Missouri curriculum and guide our work. And so we know that, you know, third grade in the area of math and number sense, students, according to the grade level expectations, should be expected to know these things. The translation then is where the MAP comes in of assessing those grade level, those GLEs, those grade level expectations. And the way they, they translate that is they produce a scale score, and then they have taken those scaled scores and have grafted, not graph PH, but F, those onto achievement levels and kind of set those cut points. And so as I understand the question, the, the question is that, you know, proficient is proficient on grade level, you know, or is basic on grade level. And as I've gone through the, the documentation from the State Department, I cannot find anywhere where it says proficient is on grade level. As I have looked at the values, grade level would appear to be somewhere between basic and proficient. But you can see that, you know, you can read any grade level for any content area. And what it provides is kind of a, the description of what, you know, what a third grade math student who is proficient can do. So I guess it's more of a, kind of a competency-based piece, but you're, you're correct, the state does not provide a grade level equivalent. So from my perspective, because we also did have this conversation at the fourth quarterly report, where we had, had brought out performance series data, because, because we're using the same achievement level idea there. And we're looking at what, what it would be the most meaningful way to get at that as we report the beginning of year and middle coming, so on and so forth. And there is a grade level equivalent in the performance series. The, the thing when we look at the grade level equivalent though, is that's based on a national sample. And Missouri's expectations are generally higher than the national side. And so we can look at it relative to the nation. So what I'm trying to figure out is a good way to translate what we know from that versus what we know from this and, and how that aligns, but-
Yeah, because I, I think the danger is, you know, you look at these numbers and you say maybe, okay, we see sixty-five percent of kids in a certain grade are in advanced or proficient. And then you see that thirty-five percent are in basic or below basic. And then there's just this assumption that, well, thirty-five percent of the kids are, you know, we're failing thirty-
Below grade level?
Yeah, they're below grade level. And I think we just need to be cautious that we speak the language that that says, and that's, that's not necessarily what that implies. I mean, certainly the below basic, but I mean, there's a spectrum of how kids can score in all those categories. So I don't know, it's just-
A couple, a couple of things-
It's just the danger of data, I guess, sometimes.
Couple, couple ways to respond to that. Texas proficiency is much lower. In other words, you could be at fifty percent and be proficient, okay? Colorado, the same thing, but the proficient level is much lower than what Missouri is. Missouri's is fairly high. In other words, you've got to score really well to be proficient. So I think the common core standards that are coming in, and the assessment's going to be tied to that with the thirty-one states, I think that's all going to be leveled. And so then I think we're going to probably be able to answer that better. Right now, I think Missouri, grade levels, standards in Missouri, I would say is below proficient. It's more closer to the basic is what I would think.
That's kind of been my impression too, but it's-
I think so.
I've always been trying to get a handle on that, and I haven't been able to.
I, I would add that as I've, as I've seen kind of the life of the MAP come through and how that's translated to curriculum and all, early on, there was a thing called a placemat. And the placemat basically had the content standards and, and had very big broad statements. Students will speak and write standard English. And so we in the field say, can we have a little bit more guidance as to what that looks like at a grade level perspective? How's that different, third versus fourth versus fifth? And so the grade level expectations were a translation of that. And that, you know, that documentation is out there, and it really will go, I mean, I guess the, the old school way to say it is objective level, but you know, what does it look like punctuation-wise for a third grader at one, or a third grader on this punctuation expectation versus fourth versus fifth? And you can really kind of see how they're woven together. As I understand the common core, I think it's going to be along those same lines. The question will be, does it come up to the standards and expectations we're used to as a state, I believe?
Supposed to be.
Questions for Dr. Goodman? Ms. Huggins?
A couple of questions. I kind of look at these year-by-year things, and, and I kind of take the position, maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but I kind of take the position that everything's kind of flowing the same way with the four or five things that, that we're okay, that we can understand that. When things start kind of flowing differently for some reason, that, that maybe there's an issue there. Starting out with Figure 12, and I don't know if there's an answer to this, which is on page sixteen, I think, is percent of schools in comparable districts making AYP. From 2009, 2010, the regional cohort in Springfield, the rest of the comparable schools had an uptick there from 2009, 2010. The cohort and Springfield Public Schools had a further decline. Is there, is there something that you read into that? Is that something that's just what it is, or?
Well, I guess the first piece is if we, if we think behind the percent piece, this measure, imagine if you had a roster of all the schools in a district. And so in our case, we have a listing of fifty schools, and we say, okay, how many made, how many didn't? And then translate that percentage kind of out. And that data is, probably, I hope it is, it would make the illustration easier than a hypothetical. Probably isn't. I guess the point I'm trying to get at is that's more than likely the movement of one or two schools, potentially in North Kansas City or Columbia's case, that, that could be up to three schools. So that'd be my first part, that we've got a couple that did make that movement versus a couple that didn't. I think a lot of it is kind of moving, kind of floating ever so closely to where the AYP expectation is, and that there is just enough variability in some school sites that they are literally that close to the fence or to the, you know, to the standard of being able to push over.
Then Figure twenty-six, had a question. This is the Algebra I End of Course. Is there a, and again, this is, I guess what always kind of strikes me is, you know, some things going up and some, some of these things going down. And here, it's kind of a, another mixed bag. You've got three improving performance from 'oh nine to 2010, and three, including Springfield, showing less performance in, in that year. Is there a thought behind why that was and, and what, if anything, that tells us?
The, the first piece that, that I looked at upon seeing this was to check the count of number of reportable students, which is, is essentially the measure of how many students took it. And in our case, we can see we were up almost seven hundred students taking the assessment. And that's partly just a function of the scope and sequence in terms of when kid, where the, the, the Algebra I End of Course Assessment is placed, you know, per kids and their coursework. The other thing is that, I believe with the exception of Hazelwood, that was also the case for the other districts that were down. So I think it was regional cohort and Columbia were down. We can see they were also up two and three hundred students. Now, the exception to the rule is Hazelwood, who came up with an increase in the number of students taking the assessment.
I think the other thing that's different about the EOCs, and I'm hypothesizing that we're going to see this up and down continue, is that each district has the opportunity to delay a student in taking the EOC. If I'm a student in an Algebra I class, and whether I'm passing or not, the teacher deems that I don't believe that student is ready to be proficient, we can mark, delay the student, have them do more learning, whether it's retake the class or get some additional help, and then wait and take the test the next year. So I think you're going to see waves of kids being delayed, and then they have to take it the next year because they're repeating the class, they may or may not perform as well. We can delay our eighth grade students that are in algebra and then let them wait until they're in high school and take it. So I think you're going to, I'm going to predict you're going to see this back and forth with the EOCs in the high schools because districts do, schools do have the opportunity to delay a student if they don't think they're ready yet to take that test. Now, eventually, they have to take it before they graduate from high school, but they don't necessarily have to take it when they're in the class.
And we, and we see the same thing in the English II End of Course Assessment, although there, you've got most, and that's on Figure five.
Yeah, and, and the difference here is the, the reportables, not that, you know, it was seven hundred different on the Algebra I side. Here, we only see a difference of thirty-three. But for some of, of the reasons Mrs. Kissinger just noted as well, the slope isn't as down, I don't believe, on this one between the two. And, excuse me, the other piece is we are, we are just kind of the two years in, but it, you know, the performance is staying, you know, a little above, in the seventy-five range, I guess would be my response.
No, and, and again, I'm not, I'm just wondering if, if these are indicators of anything to, to the administration. And finally, the last question I have would be on both of the, the aggregates, the aggregate for Communication Arts and the aggregate for math. The math is on page twenty-two, and is there- and page seven for the Communication Arts. Tracking this back from 2006, 2010, have we looked at the rate of growth those five years and, and plotted that versus the cohort? I mean, it's easy to do, I guess, but i- is there a concern that, you know, you have Rockwood from about sixty-six to seventy-four, say? You know, the different ones showing the improvement in Springfield and Columbia from, in the five years, maybe two points improvement? Is that something that, that is an indicator at all?
Yeah, this is the-
The flatness, I guess?
Sure. The, a couple, a couple of comments. The, the measure here, this is the first year we have rolled all three-eight and high school together. Previously, we had three-eight. So we haven't, we haven't previously presented it to look at, at what I think you're referring to as a slope, you know, the, the amount of change and is it comparable in there. The first thing I see when looking at it is really, for, in Springfield's case, kind of two levels. Where we have this low, what, about fifty-five, fifty-seven kind of level, then upwards to fifty-nine, kind of the two-stage piece. It would be, you know, we could certainly plot a slope and kind of check the, the difference in there. I think if we looked in there, it's probably pretty close, although it does appear that Rockwood and Hazelwood might have a bit more change from 'oh six to ten.
Questions?
Just a statement on that end of course exam, that that's new, and, I mean, it's one year of data. I hope we don't start making decisions on end of course exam with one year of data. And I think that was a state effort to try to improve the learning there because there wasn't a reason at the high school level that students would see to take the MAP test seriously. There was no effect. Now there is in English II and Algebra I. You have to take it, and then it's a percent of the grade. So I, I think as they, if they continue to look at that measure statewide, we may see some other changes on that end of course exam and how they're administering that because we already see some issues with block schedules or year-long schedules, or if you're taking it and you take the, your test before the end of your, end of course exam is really not at the end of your course. You know, it's before your course ends so you can get the score back so it can be a part of your grade, which, you know, is kind of like the MAP. We give it in April, and we still have six weeks of instruction, you know, and it's a, so I understand that point, but when it's an end of course, to me, it ought to be at the end of the course with some teaching still to be there. So I think there's some tweaking to do. I think the, the reasoning behind trying to do that, to get students to really take it more seriously because it had an effect, and to understand what effect that had was a good one, but I don't think we've still come up with the right measure yet and timeframe to figure out exactly statewide, what do they know at the end of the course. So I, I think we're still going to see some more things there, maybe, if we, if they keep taking away the funding and keep doing. I, I'm, I'm not sure, but I'm hoping that's what the direction is with that end of course, that it, it's in the beginning stage, not the end.
Thank you. I, I just want to mention one other thing, as our, as far as our enrollment, and I think we put out a press release on our enrollment, I think it was this morning, that our enrollment is up. I think it's like a hundred and sixty-seven, how many, I believe it is, sixty-nine? Hundred and sixty-nine? One hundred and sixty-nine. Also, on top of that, I, I wanna mention that our preschool numbers are right around six hundred plus. And so, as far as our facilities and our staffing, I think, I think we're really stretched a little bit. But anyway, I just wanna give, make sure the board had that data, as well as the public cabinet. I know it's gonna be out tomorrow. So, thank you.
Moving on in the agenda, we did take action last month, our last study session for the tax anticipation, note financing. Moving on to action items for separate consideration, Board of Education, ten-eleven legislative priorities. Dr. Ritter?
Okay. We've had the opportunity, we had a discussion last time, and then we've had, we continued to discuss it, and then eventually, the cabinet made the adjustments that came out of the recommendations from the board. And then you have those adjustments, along with some other tweaking that we've done. And so there's been a lot of people contributing and having conversations around the legislative priorities. I do feel this is pretty close to the final product, so if you would take a look at those this evening, and then I think we're gonna need action to show support for these priorities. It's gonna be a, it's gonna be a tough year, and so I think this is something we need to keep in front of our legislators. So anyway, if you could, if there's any questions, or any, any concerns, any thoughts?
Comments, questions, thoughts, concerns about the, the list of priorities?
I, I don't have a question about the list. I think it's funny. Jerry called me about this MSBA, as their legislative resolutions, and I actually printed those off, and I note that a lot of them are very similar to, I did print them off as well. Only one of us should've printed them off. I didn't know we were gonna talk about them now.
Oh, I'm sorry, do you want...
No, 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 no. We're going to, but if, if you wanna bring them up.
Well, one, one of the things that, and as you'll see, there are a lot of them are very similar, and, and a couple of them are maybe worded a little better than ours, and, and...
No way.
I, I know. Crazy, isn't it? One of them that I thought was, in terms of other revenue streams, and... I don't know which one that is on the...
Number eleven, or Amendment Six on number eleven, page eleven.
Six, seven, and eight.
Yeah, by bringing certain taxes on tobacco, alcohol, internet sales to a level consistent with the national average. I think that's a, that's a nice way to, to phrase that, because, Ms. Twitty, Ms. Twitty brought that up, that, you know, we are fiftieth in the, or forty-ninth in the nation on tobacco tax. And, and so the idea that, that we probably need to be consistent with, with at least the national average is maybe a better way to phrase that in our priorities.
Do you wanna correct something? I was with the Education Summit in DC, and I was with Kentucky, and they wanna made it, made it clear to me that Missouri was below them as far as the lowest taxes on tobacco. Just wanna clarify that, in fact, because they had one thing they wanted to hang your hat on.
They said we could triple our tobacco tax, and we'd still be the lowest in the nation.
So does the board wanna adjust the language?
I mean, it's a little more definitive, bringing it up to, I think the national average was a dollar forty-seven for that specific thing, but it's...
It would be nice to have a target, I suppose, for no other reason.
So put that language in there?
Sure.
So I'm, we're gonna prove, we're gonna prove these tonight?
Yes.
Then should that be presented in the form of amendment?
That's what I go, that was gonna reset. We need to make this formal, to, to do, I guess, are there any other changes? Or we can do them one at a time? Okay?
Would you like to make that in the form of amendment, a motion?
I would.
Sure. Move that we amend the priorities related to finance.
You want it to read identical to what MSBA's got?
To, yeah, there you go, to make it identical to the MSBA.
And that says, just to put it on record, supports increasing state revenues available to adequately fund public education by bringing certain taxes on tobacco, alcohol, and internet sales to a level consistent with the national average. Did I put enough words in your mouth?
That'd be my motion.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Got that, Ms. Rober? Okay. We have a motion to amend, I guess it would be the second bullet point in finance, to read with, consistent with the MSBA policy, or MSBA resolution. Any discussion on that amendment? Okay, we will vote on the amendment. Dr. Holman?
Aye.
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 No, that was just the amendment. Any other comments? It's like a racehorse, Steve, just... Any other comments? The only question I had was, and we'll have to talk about it right now, maybe later, but, you know, how do we communicate this? What's our process gonna be to get this to the legislature? I don't know that we have to have that discussion either, but we can talk about that later. I think that's really important, is to, once we approve it, what do we, how do we communicate it, and continue to communicate it all through the session? Okay? I would entertain a motion to approve the legislative priorities as amended.
I would make that motion.
Okay, you have a motion by Dr. Holman, a second by Dr. Prater, to amend, I mean, to approve the Springfield Public Schools legislative priorities as amended. Any other question or comment? Mr. Cosmer?
Aye.
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 Well, I certainly wanna appreciate the board's input in, in this process. This is, this is different for us, as far as a little bit more detailed and a little more specific than we've typically done in the past, and for good reason. It's gonna be a different year, Jeff said, and so I, I think it's really important that we be very specific and very consistent in our message. So I do appreciate all the board's time and effort and comments and thoughts in that process, and we will formalize this in whatever document. And I think we do need to put a plan with Scott Mars or whomever as to how best to convey this message to the legislators and make sure, maybe before November, I don't know, but, so. Okay, enough on that. Moving on, item seven-point-oh-two, approval of transportation routes.
Yeah, today, this evening, I was going to have Mr. Emling, Rick Emling, present that, but he's been selected as interim director of Southwest Region Five, and he's gonna cert, and serves on their executive board, so that's where he is at. And he serves on a board, Missouri Association of Pupil Transportation. So anyway, he will not be here this evening, but that's a good honor for him. But in, in his presence, I mean, in his absence, Mr. Chotis will serve. So, Mr. Chotis, please.
Thank you. Missouri law requires the board to approve school bus routes no later than the end of October each school year. On board docs, you'll see a second document that details the one-hundred-and-twenty-eight bus routes, which transport an average of sixty-five-hundred students daily. Buses travel approximately seven-thousand-six-hundred miles each day for those routes. And at this time, we ask that the board approve the bus routes as developed by the Transportation Department.
Questions for Mr. Chotis?
Move that we approve the bus routes as submitted.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion by Dr. Prater, a second by Ms. Twitty, that the board approve the bus routes as developed by Transportation Department. Any other comments? Dr. Holman?
Aye.
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 Okay, moving on, seven-point-oh-three, Treasurers Report.
Mr. Chotis? Thank you. As always, I ask you to look at the financial statement. This one is for the month of September 2010, as well as year-to-date information. Pointing out a few of the revenue items, sales tax collections continue their roller coaster ride. I believe the month before, they were up like a hundred and thirty thousand, now they're down one-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand. For the year, we are up thirty-six thousand dollars. Again, that's on sales tax. On property tax, the combined current and delinquent property taxes were up one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand from last September's collections. And fiscal year-to-date, we are up three-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand. But once again, as always, I, I mentioned that the first few months of the year, the total sales tax collection, or property tax collections are essentially an insignificant amount of the total that we will collect for the year. For the year, the total revenue is eleven-point-nine-eight percent of budget compared to last year, which at, at this time was nine-point-nine percent of the year-end amount. The major number that's, that's impacting that is the federal revenue. You might recall last year, for the first several months of the year, I pointed out that the federal revenue was lagging behind prior year because of the title, and the special ed revenue was not coming in as timely as it had in prior years. This year, we seem to be back on track. And so, year-to-date, federal revenue is at seven-point-three million compared to only one-point-eight million last year. So that's a nice number. Expenditures for the year were at thirteen-point-two percent of total budget, and last year, at this time, we were at thirteen-point-three percent of the eventual year-end amount. So, tracking very closely to where we were at this time last year. At this time, I would ask the board if they have any questions, and to approve the Treasurers Report.
Questions?
The sales tax numbers, are we still in line with what you had thought, even with their up and down nature?
We're, we're, on the sales tax, we are doing just a tad bit better than where I had anticipated we would be. You know, last year, we ended the year at seventeen, just under seventeen-point-eight million. This year, conservatively, we budgeted seventeen-point-seven million. And since we're up a bit over last year, we're just a bit better than, than budget.
And the same thing with transportation revenue. It's, show it being down sixty-two-thousand dollars, but that's in line with what we knew after the governor's cuts, is that correct?
Right. We, we are down, to put that in perspective, we're down thirty-one percent from the previous September's collections. And fiscal year-to-date, we're down forty-six percent. However, the budget was, includes a reduction of forty-seven percent. So we're tracking, once again, very closely with budget.
Any other questions for Mr. Chotis?
I would entertain a motion to approve the Treasurers Report as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Twitty, second by Dr. Prater, that the board approve the Treasurers Report as presented. Any other discussion? Dr. Holman?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Moving on, routine action items. Changes in the following action item, I would entertain a motion to the board to approve each of the routine action items as submitted.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Prater, second by Dr. Holman, that the board approve each of the routine action items as submitted. Questions or comments? McCosmer?
Aye.
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 Moving on to general consent items. All these items were addressed October fifth study session. I would entertain a motion that the board approve each of the recommended, recommendations submitted in, under the general consent items.
So move.
Motion by...
Second. Mrs. Twitty, second.
Motion by Dr. Holman, and a second by Ms. Twitty, that the board approve, wake everybody up here, the board approve each recommendation submitted by the administration and the general consent items. Any other questions? Dr. Holman?
Aye.
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 Oh, it's late, but several information items, moving on to comments from the board. Legislative Report. Yeah. Dr. Rearing, Legislative Report.
Well, MSBA, of course, is this weekend, and part of that, there are discussions this weekend, it's gonna be that their legislative priorities, as you mentioned earlier, is there anything in their listing that we as a board would be uncomfortable with?
Delegates, we got all of our delegates, they wanna make sure everybody's comfortable with, as a board. They're very much in line with our legislative priorities, pretty much. Even closer now with one of them. So I don't know if there's anything in here that I would bring up that would be concerned with, I guess, Mr. Cosmer and Mr. Renner are the two delegates.
There's something on Title I of funding.
I don't think they've touched that, have they?
No, I mean, in terms of equitable...
Number three, is that the one you're talking about?
What number is it?
Amendment three, that oppose utilization of competitive grants to distribute funding for Title I.
Yeah.
And other formula grants, basically, I mean, there's a lot of...
Method of equitable distribution.
Yeah, there's a lot of discussion right now of using competitive grants, the possibility for funding Title I in, in the administration. And basically, would be, we would propose, oppose that. MSBA would oppose doing that.
I wonder, for selfish reasons, that, I mean, I know that we get a lot of grants, and, and, I think that's, that's something that... Certainly something to think about. Huh?
You can ask them.
Well, I think that's the reason, the statement of reason, is that the, some school districts don't have grant writers, and, and, but, you know, part of...
Five-hundred-and-twenty-three districts in the state, not all of them have the capability.
But, but part of, you know, part of what, one of our legislative priorities is making it easier for districts to be innovative and, and flexible and these things. And that's kinda tied into that of, of, you know...
It does work against that.
Focusing and, and rewarding innovative and proven programs. I mean, I can see both sides of it, but...
I think, to me, it'd get back to the point, what's Title I for? So we would compete so that our students who would qualify would receive more funds than other students in other districts would not receive because they didn't have a grant writer or something, you know? To me, that, I mean, that doesn't sit well with me overall. I'm concerned about Springfield schools. But if the real purpose for Title I is to help students who did not have the advantages reach their potential, I think it's probably still important for me for Title I students, wherever they are, to be productive citizens. So I don't mind competitive grants, but I don't, I probably wouldn't jump on this area as one of those that I would support, you know, unless they put some sep, I don't want them taking money out of there. But if they put some, if they figured some other way to, for innovative programs, that you could do it without hurting kids in other, other districts, I, because I just think that's... in other, other districts, um, I, because, I, I just think that's, um, the big, the big issue here is the race to the top competition, and that is the worst thing because they're prescribing, if you don't, uh, step up to the plate in this grant, as far as charters are concerned, et cetera, uh, you don't, uh, qualify. And I, I think that's part of the reason for this opposition, it's not just that small districts. I do think that we as a district oppose, I think, race, well, at least I oppose, race to the top. It's basically saying, this prescription works, we know it worked, no, it doesn't. And so, they're basically, uh, let, and we're allowing the, the tail to wag the dog, and that's the problem. And so, if that becomes, now, the rationale they present here is a small district. I think the overall opposition should be, for any kind of competitive grant, provide, when they prescribe or say that, you need to say it this way, otherwise you don't qualify, which is really inappropriate, very inappropriate. I think the only other one that, um, I, I mean, I, there are fifteen amendments, and the last one was on career ladder, and we don't do career ladder, so, um, they support adequate state funding for it, and I, I, I'm not sure I agree with that, uh, number fifteen. I, I think the money should be in the teacher's salary, not because they do extra work to, to do it, you know, determining if you do extra, you, you're, you get, I, I've, and I understand why it's there and it, the special funding for smaller districts who, so they could compete, I understand the whole reasoning, I just don't think that's, um, you know, it takes away from, um, the formula. The money could be put in the formula, so I, um, I mean, I wouldn't vote down all the other good things based on fifteen, but I, I really don't support fifteen, and I understand why the majority of schools in MSBA do, because they have career ladders, so.
So, the two of you got a pretty good message then, as far as going through these amendments?
Yeah, I, you know, the only, one of the tax credits may be a discussion. I don't, probably not at the MSBA level, but certainly statewide as far as creating standards for tax credits. So, I, I just thought it might be important, you know, since this is one of the bodies that we are, are supportive, that you, everybody kind of have a look at the resolutions that are there. Any other legislative reports or things they want to bring up? Future issues? Dr. Reer said, the MSBA's this weekend, at Antera, we have three presentations going on Friday and Saturday, so.
Nine, nine o'clock, ten o'clock, and, uh, on Saturday, is it?
Nine o'clock, Saturday. So, should be a good meeting, um, good discussions, uh, looks like good presentations that are, that are scheduled, so, and we have a few more even that aren't specifically dealing with Springfield, but, uh, Mr. Ellis is doing some presentations, some MSBA on some topics, so.
I'm on a panel sometime.
You're on a panel.
Yeah, Saturday morning, I believe, I better find out the exact time, but I know I'm on.
That'd be good.
At least that's what Peggy Taylor told me, so.
Past presidents.
Past, uh, board presidents' panel, I think, yeah.
I think we are doing a unique presentation with Park Hill, and Anita's working with Mark Miles on that, and, uh, that's going to be an interesting com, that presentation, I'm anxious to see it, so, on quality.
Other? Anything else? Come up? Okay, moving on, just as a note, financial and operations report are listed there. Uh, if you get a chance, be sure and look through the financial report for September. Don't forget your plus deltas, and we do need to go into executive session. So, I would entertain a motion that the board go into executive session, effectively, immediately following this meeting, to discuss legal and real estate, real estate matters as provided in section sixteen oh-twenty-one, one and two, RSMO.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Twitty, a second by Mr. Renner, that the board go into executive session. Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
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 Okay, we are adjourned.